All right, it is six o'clock. I will call the October twenty-fifth, two thousand and twenty-two meeting of the With County Board of Supervisors to order. This evening, we have Pastor Lon Tobin from the Saint Paul United Methodist Church to provide invocation. If you would please stand or remain standing for the pledge of allegiance.
Let us pray. Dear God, we pray to you this night to help our leaders govern wisely. Bring them emotional stability, mental clarity, and physical endurance to do their work. Please bestow upon them your common grace and strength to effectively carry out their responsibilities to preserve peace and tranquility in the land, so that all of your people may flourish and the gospel may spread unhindered throughout the land. Give our commissioners grace to do justly, love mercy, and walk humbly before you with all integrity. May they defend the oppressed and protect the virtuous. Lord Jesus, you were born in a little town. You grew up under the authority of local leaders and officials who manage the majority of your daily life. We lift up our local leaders today. We pray for our mayors, city councils, county commissioners, police chiefs, judges, and all who serve our local communities. Lord, strengthen them with wisdom and grace for the heavy burdens they carry. May they manage their teams and projects with love. Keep their hearts pure and their eyes turned towards your face as they work in the best interests of the people they are called to serve. And at the same time, please empower us as citizens to give them the respect due their office, whether or not we agree with their political positions or their decisions. We ask these things in Christ's name. Amen.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
All right, as always, well, missed my script. First thing is introduction of our new building inspector.
They changed the agenda on me.
Hey, that's all right. We just gotta go with the flow, don't we? Good evening. Thank you, Chairman, Vice Chair, Board. Thank you for everything you guys do. Thank you for all the decisions you guys do to help this community grow and better itself. Thank you for all the support that you guys have showed the Building Department the last couple of years since I've been on board with the county. But without further ado, I just want to introduce our new building inspector. His name is Wes Taylor.
Yes.
He's from Pulaski, and he'll be assisting us to take the Building Department to the next level.
Welcome aboard.
Welcome aboard.
Glad to be here. It's really exciting to help out and be a part of it.
I'm sure he'll appreciate the help. Busy, busy time.
Yes, sir.
A little concerned we wasn't gonna make it this evening, but we got here.
I'm glad you did.
Thank you.
Thank you, Tom.
All right. Now, we have citizens' time. As always, I'll call you up. You have three minutes. Mr. Smith will keep the time. And the first person we have signed up is Mr. Jerry Blevins. Mr. Blevins?
My domestic tourism report for this reporting period is slightly better than my last report delivered at the last With County Board of Supervisors meeting. Problems still exist, and such things as my smartphone, copier, TV, radio, and portable space heater were messed with. Only a small key was stolen from my Toyota car. A much bigger problem was a huge increase in personal property taxes for this year. My personal property taxes went from three hundred and twenty-five dollars in two thousand and twenty-one to four hundred and seventy-five dollars and ninety-two cents in two thousand and two for the same vehicles. A forty-seven percent increase in one year. When something like this occurs, I go searching for answers as to why. I went to a comparable county in size to width in Joint With County, which in this case was Smith County, and had the lady at the Smith County Commissioner of Revenue Office calculate my personal property taxes. And she came up with three hundred and eighty-eight dollars. Smith County also got a thirty-nine percent state car tax relief amount from the state of Virginia for this year. Also, the Smith County Board of Supervisors lowered the rate of tax per hundred dollars of value to two dollars and fifteen cents per hundred dollars of value. Contacting the Grayson County Commissioner of Revenue Office and having them figure my personal property taxes, I found the same amount was similar to Smith County, but the lady at Grayson Commissioner of Revenue stated the Grayson County Board of Supervisors had reduced the tax rate this year because of the huge increase in vehicle bans. One must also bear in mind that Grayson County is only approximately one-half the size of With County in population. Taking all of the above to Kathy at the With County Commissioner of Revenue Office, I was told that With County got only a twenty-seven point three seven percent state car tax refund to the state of Virginia, which is interesting indeed. When one considers the fact that With and Smith Counties are close when it comes to population. The With County Board of Supervisors set the personal property rate at two dollars and twenty-two cents per hundred dollars of value. However, when Kathy at the Commissioner of Revenue of With County states to me that the With County Board of Supervisors could have done better when it comes to setting the two thousand and twenty-two tax rate for personal property taxes, I must agree, because who better than her would know? Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Blevins. Next person we have signed up is Steve. Is it Knut?
Knut.
Gentlemen, ma'am. I don't purport to fully understand how all this works. I ran a business for twenty-five years in North Carolina, ran a restaurant. We did in excess of ten million dollars per year. So I understand a little bit about business and financing and budgets and all that. As a minister with a congregation, I'm involved in setting up a budget yearly for our congregation. And we determine what monies we need and therefore set a budget contribution. But I'm here tonight about this little green piece of paper. And I'll admit, I'm a little disappointed that the room is not full of folks with a tax bill in their hand. I wish my vehicle was worth what's on this paper. I really do. I would take it and trade it tomorrow. But my car has been appraised at what I feel is at least two thousand, possibly as much as forty-five hundred dollars more than what it's worth. I bought the car from Sheillers three and a half years ago, a high-mileage vehicle. Anyway, let's cut to the chase. I called Monday, and I followed the yellow sheet of paper, the instructions, and called the Revenue Office. And I talked to Jesse. Y'all may know who that is. Sounded like a young man, and he tried to assist me. I'm questioning how you arrived at this valuation of my car. He says it is done through NADA. I use NADA quite a bit. Most of us, if we buy and sell a car, we will use that. J.D. Powers, as such, has taken that over, as I've seen. And I printed it up, and for my two thousand and sixteen Kia Sportage in good condition, and taking into account the mileage, which it's a high-mileage car. I bought it that way. I paid a little less to be able to do that. My car is worth, according to that, exactly two thousand less. Went to Kelley Blue Book. You don't want to know. It was a good, almost five thousand dollars less in value. So my problem is, and that's why I'm here tonight, I appreciate all you do. And I know there's not a one-size-fits-all. But when someone says, "Your car is worth this," when it's really worth that, and I've got to pay extra taxes, the extra fifty dollars, I'll pay that. My taxes went up fifty dollars. I can afford that. And I understand I have a daughter who has taught school for twenty years now in North Carolina. Her husband is chief of police in Spencer, North Carolina. And I understand we have to support our teachers, our schools, and our police departments. But there's got to be a better way. You guys are smart. You've been doing this for years. And surely, there's some way to fix this to where I don't feel like, as a citizen, that I'm paying taxes on something that's really not valued at what you're valuing it at. I appreciate your time and your attention on this.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
All right. The next person we have signed up is Ms. Linda Myers. Ms. Myers?
Yes. Good evening, ladies. At the last meeting, you had mentioned the loss of our local farmers that got hit on the road and so on and so forth recently. And you also had mentioned what Farm Bureau had done. I brought along the template that I made for the Farm Bureau, which I can hand out here, and a couple of the brochures that we made. Now, they were very, very reasonable to do. The printer printed me off a thousand copies. There's three on an eight-by-ten page. And then, we had three thousand of these, so we gave them to all the high schools for their driver ed program. And then we put them in every convenience store from Fort Pitt-Chiswell all the way down. And they were very, very happy to put these on the counter.
Here goes, Ms. Myers.
In case you want to...
I'll take them all.
You want to take them all? Okay. You want to, next year, if this is too late in the season, and have a road campaign for, to protect our farmers and our people that are on the highways? It could be done very, very modestly. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Myers. All right. The next person we have signed up is Ms. Barbara Williams. Ms. Williams?
He's going to call for me tonight. I'm really nervous.
If you would, sir, just give us your name, because they type up the names.
Yes. My name's William Robinson. I'm Ms. Williams's son-in-law. And what brings Ms. Williams here tonight is increases in... Well, first of all, she is a retired seventy-five-year-old lady on a fixed income who owns some very, very old mobile homes in a mobile home park. Currently, there are only four of the seven that are occupied. And that's what we're about. We're here with deep concerns of increases in water bills. In July, her, for her trailer park...
Eighty-six dollars.
The bill was eighty-six dollars. In August, it went to a hundred and eighty-two dollars. And in September, it went to two hundred and forty-two dollars. And we may be ahead of ourselves, because I noticed on your agenda there's something about Water Committee, and I think she spoke with Mr. Chris a couple of weeks ago concerning this, and he recommended that she come tonight. So if we're ahead of ourselves, I'm sorry, but we want to make sure that these concerns are voiced. This has something to do with an increase in water rates. Or meter size and meter rates. And this is just exorbitant increases when you consider quadrupling, you know, the amount that she is being expected to pay. Especially on a fixed income for, you know, for this type of situation. She's been told that it's going to cost seven hundred dollars. She's going to be responsible for exchanging out a water meter that the town or county required them to install five or six years ago, because they were bringing the water line through previous to that. For at least thirty-five years that they had owned the property, they had been on well water. And they were going to have to pay to have meters installed and pay a basic rate, whether they used them or not. So, you know, we don't understand why, at this point in time, she should have to be, you know, to pay more than what her social security check is for a month to have a water meter exchanged out so that it supplies the proper amount of water for her trailer park instead of this huge meter that they already have in, two-inch line meter, I think it is, installed now. So again, if we're ahead of ourselves, I apologize.
Well, you're not ahead of yourself, and that was the right time to speak. Again, we will, there is a recommendation, and we will take it later in the meeting.
They told me to put a smaller meter in. There's a two-inch meter there. And that's why it's going to be so much.
Yes, ma'am.
And I would have to pay seven hundred dollars to have a smaller meter put in.
That's the cost of the meter. Like I said, we've got it on our agenda. We're going to discuss it later on, but that was the right place to speak, so.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
And the next person we've got signed up is Robert, and I don't want to...
Sole.
Sobe?
Sole.
Sole? Okay, Mr. Sole.
I'm here with the problem of personal property taxes also. My property tax went up thirty-three percent. Inflation is up eight percent. I don't know how you guys come up with this thirty-three percent and say it's okay. The city's also taking its lead from you guys. My city tax went up thirty-three percent. I am paying a hundred and eighty dollars more than I did last year. Now, how you justify that, I don't know. I know you get, I know the mechanics of it. I understand how you arrived at it, but why you let it go through, I don't understand. Somebody's got to be watching this. It's unfair. It's ridiculous, you know, to tax somebody a thirty-three percent increase. I made a, I talked to Roland about this on the phone, and I made a suggestion, why don't you guys go to a flat tax? Anybody that owns a vehicle in the county, say, from two thousand to two thousand and ten, pays a certain rate, from two thousand and ten to two thousand and twenty, a certain rate. This thing that you're using with the NADA is very subjective to, or objective to whoever's got the vehicle or whoever's doing the evaluation or the assessment. Somehow, you've got to make it more fair. The person that's paying less in city taxes on their vehicle gets the same services as I do. Why do I have to pay more? They get the fire department service, the police service, and all that. So I don't understand why I had to pay thirty-three percent more. I talked to a person over in the city of, office, Mr. Friedman's office. This person is paying no personal property tax. She drives an older vehicle, and she gets to go around free using all the city services. How is that fair? So I would like you guys to consider a flat rate based on the year of the vehicle, not the mileage, not the NADA. And if it's registered in the county, they should have to pay a tax on it. And I agree, you know, the county needs money to function, but please make it fair. It's very frustrating when I open the bill and say, "My God, what's going on here?" And I understand the reason for it, you know, with the increase in used car prices. But it shouldn't be based on that. If you made it a flat rate and then increased it every year, say, five, ten percent, whatever the inflation rate is to keep up with it, you'd make your money. So please consider that, and that's all I have.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
That's all the people we have signed up for citizens' time, so I'll close citizens' time. Before we move on, and I know, I guess everybody sitting up here has either received calls or talked to people out in the public. I know every one of my vehicles went up. I don't know the other six of you.
Oh, yeah.
I'll just open the floor up for any comments any board members want to make, because I get accused of getting on the soapbox, so I'll let y'all go first.
Mr. Chairman, thank you. I'm in the same boat as you folks that spoke tonight. My taxes went up big time as well. Have one of my trucks has got about a thirty-eight to forty-two hundred dollar value higher than what it probably should be. I got about a four thousand-plus value on a vehicle, more than what I paid for a vehicle new in two thousand and twenty on my tax bill. So I understand and can appreciate your frustrations. But on contrary to popular belief, we all pay the same rates that you all sitting out in the audience have to pay. So we're saddled with the same burdens that you all are. And it's not that we don't sympathize with you. There's just a lot of things that's out of our control. And the way the reassessments and stuff is done is completely out of our control. And Mr. Baer and the chairman can correct me if I'm wrong, but I think the reassessments and the NADA values being used as mandated by the Code of Virginia, the way I understand it. And so, again, you know, we will continue to look at it. But we feel the same pain that you guys and ladies feel. I promise you, we do.
I don't want to get... Sir, we don't, we don't take questions.
Well, it's not a question. We went through this last year.
Okay, sir. We were up here to listen to your, you know, your time. And now this is our time to address what everybody's saying. Mr. Baer, that does open up a question. And going back to what Mr. Terry said, I mean, I assume we're required to use NADA. I don't...
Yes, the, well, the Code of Virginia, and Ms. Vaught could probably speak to it far better than I can. Basically, automobiles shall be valued by means of recognized pricing guide, or if the individual, if the model or year of the individual automobile, not listed in the recognized pricing guide, the individual vehicle may be valued on the basis of percentage, percentage of cost. In using a recognized pricing guide, a commissioner shall either use either of the following two methods, which one is may use all applicable adjustments in such guide to determine the values of each individual automobile, which if you do that, you're touching each one, and that's about thirty thousand, over thirty thousand vehicles in the county. Or alternatively, the commissioner shall use the base value specified in such guide, which may be either average retail, wholesale, or loan value, as long as uniformly applied. And With County, to my knowledge, has always used loan value, which has been the most advantageous in the process for the land, for the vehicle owner in that. So that is where the price comes from.
We don't have the manpower to go through thirty thousand vehicles and individuals and look at mileage and how many dents it has in it. There's really just no way to do that unless you're going to hire some more people.
So to answer your question, yes, sir, that is, the code does require the use of one of those methods and then one of values with it, and they use a loan value for that method.
And it's not true. Sir, I'm not, we're trying to have a discussion, okay, sir? You had your, you had your three minutes.
I know where it's going.
All right. Mr. Sole had an interesting idea about the flat tax. Are we allowed by the Code of Virginia to do that?
I would ask you to give us time to review that. I do not think so, but it is worth reviewing.
I mean, I think it's interesting.
Yeah.
Interesting content.
And, you know, Mr. Blevins left, and, you know, he wanted to talk about, you know, he contacted Smith County, and they dropped their rate. But he left out that Smith County's real estate rate is seventy-four cents. And With County's is fifty-one. So, and Mr. Knut, the gentleman that spoke earlier, you know, he made the comment that there's not one-size-fits-all. And that's the frustrating piece for me is, you know, we have to sit down and come up with a number during budget time. And kind of like Ms. Vaught said, Mr. Baer said, we can't go through twenty-nine thousand vehicles in the county. I mean, mine went up. Mr. Terry's went up. I assume everybody up here's went up. And I don't know, short of looking at it next year, I don't know how to fix it.
But is there a, is there a process or something if somebody is valued a whole lot more? Is there a way that they can go to appeal that or something?
Well, according to the code, if you're doing all of them individually, you could. But otherwise, you have to uniformly apply it based off of the loan value. And one thing to look ahead to next year that I would like to do is work with the Commissioner of Revenue's office, see how quickly we can get the downloaded values this year, maybe change our schedule, put down lower values. We did off of an estimate of what we thought was going to go up last year. It obviously went up a whole lot higher than that. See if we can get a better estimate as quickly as we can in a year to help us during the tax decision time next year.
Well, and there's, the General Assembly also gave us a tool.
Yes.
Unfortunately, they gave us a tool late in the year of separating personal vehicles from other personal property. And I would like to force to look at that next year. Unfortunately, because they couldn't come together till late in the budget season, we didn't get that early enough to implement it.
Ms. Vaught and Ms. Glenn and I have already started that process. And Ms. Glenn provided some information of the breakdown this year of what apart was just personal vehicles and motorcycles and what's the other personal property. And I've asked the county attorney to help us in reviewing how we need to work that into our personal property ordinance so we can have that in place next year and be able to establish a rate for that classification of being personal property and then another rate for the remaining personal property.
Another thing I'd like to since look at is dividing it up for real estate one time a year and personal property one time. If you split personal property, you know, three different tax dates to try to break it up so it's not paying so much all at once. And it's naturally going to work out this year because we've extended it to December thirtieth, and real estate isn't even out yet, so it's going to have to be at least in January or so. But, you know, I think, you know, if we break it up a little bit so that people don't have to write that big check all at once, it would help. I mean, that's a big check to write. All right. Does anybody else have anything to add? I personally hate property, personal property taxes.
I do, too.
Of course. I own a lot of vehicles, but I like to trade vehicles. I wish we could do away with them. If we could do that flat tax, I'd play a flat rate and own as many as I want to be by one. Probably be at the next meeting saying we need to go back. All right. Move on to agenda. Our next item is we have a public hearing scheduled. Mr. Baer, will you read the notice?
Yes, sir. In compliance with the Code of Virginia of nineteen fifty and amendments thereto, the With County Board of Supervisors will conduct a public hearing to consider an ordinance entitled Delinquent County Tax and Other Charges, Administrative Cost, and Attorney's Fee Ordinance of With County, Virginia. The Board of Supervisors shall hear comments from citizens concerning the proposed ordinance on Tuesday, October twenty-fifth, two thousand and twenty-two, at six oh five P.M. in the boardroom of the With County Office Building, three forty South Sixth Street, Withville, Virginia. A copy of the proposed ordinance may be found online at www.withco.org or at the County Administrator's Office, three forty South Sixth Street, Withville, Virginia, for public review.
All right. Didn't have anybody signed up to speak during the public hearings. So I'll close the public hearing. Is there anything you want to add, Mr. Baer?
No, sir. We have this under Old Business for adoption of the ordinance. A request, we take it up at that time.
All right. Moving on to the agenda, we have our payment of invoices. Each board member's received a copy of the invoices in your board package. I'll entertain a motion to approve the invoices.
So moved.
Have a motion by Mr. Terry. Do I have a second?
Second.
Have a second by Mr. Burnett. Is there any invoice any board member wants to pull out or discuss? Hearing none will do a roll call vote. Mr. Cook?
Aye.
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 So approved. Next, we have our minutes of our previous meeting from October the eleventh, two thousand and twenty-two. I'll entertain a motion to approve those minutes.
So moved.
Have a motion by Mr. Cook and a second by Mr. Smith. Is there any corrections or additions to the minutes as presented? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? So approved. Moving on to Old Business, we have the Delinquent County Tax and Other Charges ordinance. Mr. Bear, do you want to add anything to that?
And I would open the floor, if you don't care, Mr. Chairman, if the treasurer liked to add anything to it, but staff's recommendation would be, this was reviewed and proposed by the treasurer's office, and it's been before you all, staff would recommend approval of this ordinance.
Do we have any just questions or discussion on the ordinances presented?
Make a motion we approve it.
All right, have a motion by Mr. Cook, a second by Mr. Smith. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, we'll do a roll call vote with Mr. Terry.
Aye.
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 So approved. Anything else under old business, Mr. Bear?
I do not have anything, Mr. Chairman.
Right, moving on to reports, we have the treasurer, Ms. Glenn, Ms. Glenn, do you have anything?
Of course. But I'll make it brief. Only thing that I mostly have for you, financials, I'll give you a few personal property bill numbers just because all of that's gone out since the last meeting. Your financial report that was in your packet, our consolidated account at the end of September contained a balance of eighty million, four hundred eighty-four thousand, three hundred and seventeen dollars. And included in that amount, the balance of the general fund was forty million, two hundred eighty-eight thousand, forty-seven dollars. September, we had a little bit of tax collection, but October is when that'll start changing just because we do have our initial bills out and collections are, are coming in on that. I don't have anything else related to the financials unless somebody has a question or comment, and I'll move on to one other short, brief thing for you, and I'll leave you alone tonight.
Does anybody have any questions from Ms. Glenn?
Okay. The only other thing I had, I just was going to provide you billing numbers for personal property. Topic of discussion, all the bills have gone out, so we've, we've all received those. And I think I mentioned last meeting having bill shock, and I think that's where we're all at. For personal property for two thousand twenty-two, and this includes mobile homes, machine and tools tax, merchants' capital, and license fee. So this is everything that we bill out on a personal property tax bill. The dollar amount that we sent out was for eleven million, six hundred twenty-two thousand, three hundred and ninety dollars. So we briefly spoke about real estate. Ms. Vault's working on some things right now, IT director's been helping with that. So we're hoping in the coming weeks, we can make some more progress on real estate. And hopefully, by the time she and I are back for the second meeting of November, we'll have good news and be telling you that the bills are in the mail. So we're trying to be very hopeful and, and get everything out as soon as we can. So, but at some point, as mentioned before, I will be coming back to ask for an extension on the real estate bills, which obviously will not be December fifth. It will not be December thirtieth either, so we'll be considering a date for, no earlier than January the thirtieth or thirty-first. I'm not sure how the dates fall, or maybe later, but we'll tackle that as we progress through the, the real estate books and trying to get the data transferred over and get ready to bill out, so. But that's all I have.
All right, does anybody have any questions from Ms. Glenn?
No, don't.
All right, thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Thank you again. We have our commissioner, Ms. Vault.
Um, I don't have anything unless anybody has some questions.
Does anybody have any questions from Ms. Vault?
Mr. Terry, one additional thing, thank you to the board for adopting that ordinance. That'll help us in getting what some of our borderline handles that we've been unsuccessful with. So thank you for that, I forgot to mention that.
All right, moving on, we have Sheriff Foster, Sheriff Foster, you have anything?
No, Mr. Chairman, thank you.
All right, moving into new business, we have our consent calendar. Excuse me. I'll entertain a motion to approve the consent calendar.
So moved.
Have a motion by Mr. Terry to have a second.
Second.
Have a second by Ms. Lawson, is there any questions or discussion on the consent calendar? Hearing none, we'll do a roll call vote with Mr. Cook.
Aye.
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 I'll abstain.
Aye.
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 So approved. Then we have a retiring officer surplus, Mr. Hankins, I believe this is your request.
Yes, sir, thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Our animal control officer is retiring after twenty-six years of service to the county and has requested that he be allowed to purchase his firearm and to keep his cell phone. The cell phone is an older model and has, has no real value to the county. The state code authorizes you to declare as a surplus and sell for a dollar a service weapon to an officer who's retiring with more than ten years of service. So I would ask that the board authorize the, the sale of that firearm as surplus to Mr. Dunford.
All right, entertain a motion to declare the firearm a surplus and authorize the county to sell it to Arlen for a dollar.
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion by Mr. Smith, a second by Mr. Cook, is there any questions or discussion? Hearing none, we'll do a roll call vote, Mr. Terry.
Aye.
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 So approved. Mr. Bear, even though my vehicles went up, I'll pay for Arlen's pistol.
Thank you, sir.
I'll need a receipt too, so I can take it off.
This colleague helped me remember to get a receipt somewhere.
All right, moving on to staff reports, we've got the Assistant County Minister, Mr. Hankins.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, I do not have a written report, but I do have a few things that I want to mention tonight. The long-awaited lead mines rock boat is supposed to be delivered this week, and they have a, a training scheduled for Saturday in the river. So I hope to see them putting themselves in a position to effect some water rescues down there. Staying with lead mines, the construction is nearly complete, according to the contractor. There is an extensive punch list that we're going to be putting in front of them. So we, we have quite a few things that we think need some additional attention from the builder, and we, we hope to get that wrapped up soon. Do want to say congratulations to Lead Mines, they went through their recertification process again today, and they're good for another two years. So that requires a lot of hard work for the, the members and the administration there. We are working on an agreement similar to the one that you have in front of you for Max Meadows Fire Department for lead mines. We, we know that we're, we're going to be trying to hire some folks and, and structure that in a way that, that makes sense for, for both parties, you know, keeps the nonprofit in place and, and helps us to, you know, make sure that we have adequate rescue coverage for that end of the county. We have looked at an agreement that is, has long served the city of Galax and Grayson County, a cooperative agreement there. It's taken me a while to get that, but I have, I've, I've looked at it over the last three or four weeks and don't think it's exactly what we're looking for, so we're going to have to work some things out. And, and the form of agreement may be more like the memorandum of agreement that you, you see in front of you. Just because I think it'll be asked later on, I have been working with some of the folks who have put in the petition on Orion Road about some of their options. I think we're fairly close to, to making a decision there, and I expect that you'll see that advertised and probably brought to you either in late November or early December for a board decision. And then finally, you have a paper copy in front of you of the memorandum of agreement between the, the county and Max Meadows Fire Department for the provision of daytime, part-time firefighting staff, because that's the, the times when it's most difficult for them with a lot of working members to respond to the incidents that, that we have in the, the eastern end of the county. The department has considered this, you, you've had a chance to see it, but we wanted to give you one more chance to, to take a look. And i- if it appears to be in good shape to you, we would ask that you authorize the county administrator to sign the agreement and make the date effective, the, the date of his signature.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make that motion.
Second. Have a motion by Mr. Smith, a second by Mr. Terry. Is there any questions or discussion?
The, the twenty-five members that they need for the holiday day, is that, I mean, could that all be a night call? Would we still be in trouble? How, how do we determine?
It, it, it could be, that's the condition for negating this agreement and getting out of it. With twenty-five members, it would be likely that they could respond to daytime calls as well, and that's one of the reasons why we, we wanted that number in there. Just i- if they want to, if they want to get out of this agreement, they've got to grow and, and take on volunteers to the point where, where they can do it without our support.
Does anybody else have any more questions? All right, do a roll call vote, Mr. Cook.
Aye.
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 So approved.
And that's all I have, unless you all have questions for me.
Does anybody have any questions for Mr. Hankins?
Just one question to Mr. Hankins, I know with the, the punch list for the lead mines, the Rescue Squad building, we're holding final payment, all those are taken care of, correct?
We are.
Thank you, sir.
All right, have the county administrator report, Mr. Bear.
First one's our request of your approval of the annual amount received from the Department of Motor Vehicles. Request you all approve this and authorize transfer of three hundred and forty-five dollars to the Withland Animal Welfare League for the DMV sale of animal-friendly license plates.
Entertain a motion to authorize transfer of the three hundred and forty-five dollars to the Animal Welfare League.
So moved.
Have a motion by Mr. Horni to have a second.
Second.
Have a second by Ms. Lawson, is there any questions or discussion on that? Hearing none, we'll do a roll call vote, Mr. Terry.
Aye.
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 So approved.
Next, as you are aware, we have, we were party to the opioid settlement, and we have started receiving funds into that settlement. We have a revenue account that is receiving those funds. This month, probably received two or three other transactions that have come in. Have been attending some, some webinars and meetings regarding the requirements and uses of that fund, and would just request that the board approve setting up an opioid settlement account balance that we can put those funds into, and then we can transfer them out as we do, have expenditures that meet the qualifications. Action request, it would just be authorization to establish an opioid settlement fund cash balance account.
All right, entertain a motion to establish that line item or that phone.
So moved.
Have a motion by Mr. Terry to have a second.
Second.
Have a second by Mr. Burnett, is there any questions to discuss? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, so approved.
The next, putting this in my report for you all to, to discuss, and if, if you want to have further discussions or send to Personnel Committee, however you want to. But with all the projects that we currently have going on with the projects that are coming forward, we need to have more engineering assistance than what we, we currently have. Mr. Kinsler's doing a fine job, Mr. Chris doing a fine job on the water side. But all the projects, especially all the stormwater management projects that are going on, are taking up a tremendous amount of time. As, as you are aware, the first solar farm that we had put in took quite a bit of time on stormwater review and erosion center of control review by our staff out there. Would like for you all to consider a request to create a staff engineer position for the county to, to have additional assistance.
Is there any discussion?
I think we needed it a year ago, so.
My, my only question is, the, the last position I voted to add to the water wastewater department still is not performing the job that I was told that they were going to be performing. And that was going after the delinquent accounts.
We, we, we have been, we did take five to court earlier this month.
How many do we have in the, how many, how many delinquent accounts?
Oh, there's, there's a lot, there's a lot. And we've got the next five going, and the goal is to establish that as a steady procedure, and that's what we're doing with the staff to have those going forward.
What percentage is it going to be split between Pep and Johnny and Pep and wastewater?
It all depends on projects and where we are, but I would say it's at least fifty-fifty right now of where we're at. It, it depends on what other projects come in with economic development that makes a difference on that.
And I guess the only other question I got, in the current market that we're in, as far as salaries, are we going to be able to get a, a person that's going to fulfill this position that's going to give quality support to Mr. Chris and, and Mr. Kinsler?
I, I think it's going to be challenging, and I'd, I'd like to have the opportunity to see. We, we, I have looked at some salary ranges, what we would start out with. We see that this would probably be more in the lines of an entry-level engineering position that we have, which would be suitable for us because it gives an opportunity to train someone on our water system, wastewater system, and have them building up to eventually be our county engineer or water wastewater director type in, in that process. But advertising as a staff engineering position would at least allow you to attract the type of candidate that wants to have a job titled engineering as opposed to just being a, a water department position or a wastewater department position.
Yeah, that's, again, that's just a concern.
What's, I mean, what's board's pleasure?
So, so what do we need, just a, a motion to authorize the advertisement?
Yes, and, and if you're all okay with it, authorize the advertisement, and we'll bring in financial things. See, obviously, it'll take a while to fill a position for half a year's budget, wouldn't bring that to you, because we need to.
So with that.
Have enough funding in, in this year's budget with vacancies we had so far, to not have to have a, a change in the budget.
The Personnel Committee will be involved in this as well, right?
Yeah.
We, before, I guess, before we do this or whatever, can we get a, a basic written job description and how much we're talking about paying them?
Yes, sir.
Before, before we vote on adding another position?
She just wanted to refer.
I'd like to see, you know, a breakdown of what, what they're doing and how much we're, we're thinking about paying them.
I would be glad to put all that together, send that to you all, and look at taking action on this at the next meeting. And the last item, the emergency management department's budget included funding for lighting security for a mobile command post, but did not include funding for an emergency replacement vehicle. With the money that was in there, there is enough money to look at getting a replacement vehicle. We are looking at used as well as new. There have been several options on the used side that we have looked at, and this would basically be just the two thousand and four, two thousand and six truck that Mr. McCabe is currently using. Two thousand and five truck. Currently using, this would be a replacement for that truck. And it's not requiring any budget change, but what was in the budget was talking about the, the lighting security. He is looking at securing enough, some like portable light structures to go with the generator that said to provide lighting for the mobile command post. But a more critical need is for the, another vehicle to replace the one he has, and this would provide a backup vehicle for the assistant position that we hope to be filling soon. And I would just request the board's approval to use the funding that's in the budget for a vehicle for the emergency management coordinator.
What, what page are we on?
One oh nine.
One oh nine.
There's not any particular vehicle that we're looking at, we've been looking at online. There's been, I guess, some departments that have been getting new vehicles and have two thousand sixteen, seventeen, eighteen vehicles with thirty, forty thousand miles on them, and things out there that we're trying to replace that.
What price range are we staying in, trying to stay in?
What's in the budget's fifty thousand dollars, we're trying to stay in, in the under forty thousand dollar range, maybe just over forty if necessary.
So you need action from us or?
I would, I would just request action from the board to authorize use of those funds for a vehicle. And, and we may find one next week, it may take us two months to find the vehicle.
I must be blind, but I don't remember reading anything, and I don't find it on one oh nine where you talk about.
I must be blind, but I don't remember reading anything and I don't find it on one oh nine where you talk about a piece.
On number four, interaction items, emergency management.
As I said, if, there, there's fifty thousand dollars funds budgeted out there, uh, but he had talked about using that for the lighting and things for the command center, we do not need fifty thousand dollars.
If I remember right, though, um, did he not request a vehicle as well during budget? And I think maybe that was a mistake, I think it went into one request, but it was meant, originally meant for lighting and vehicle.
He has been talking about replacing the vehicle and I don't remember we had any, the, the funds for the year before, but it had been discussed, but it was not specifically spelled out in the budget and that's all. I, I just want to make certain you all understood that we were looking to get it.
Yeah, that's the way I understood it in the beginning and I think it's definitely needed sooner than later, so.
No, no new funding requests, just, just making certain that you all understand that, that we're looking to get a vehicle.
Right.
So you're using the money for a vehicle and not for the lights?
We will, correct, we will, we will not get a, the, the lighting and video system and all that that he was talking about looking at getting, we will just look at getting some lights for the command center, uh, to, to make sure we've got it lit if we're out using it.
Right, okay.
All right, entertain a motion to, uh, direct staff to use the allocated funds and line item to order a vehicle within the budget.
So moved.
Have a motion by Ms. Lawson to have a second.
Second.
Have a second by Mr. Terry, is there any more discussion? Hearing none, we'll do a roll call vote, Mr. Terry.
Aye.
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 Aye. So approved. Anything else, Mr. Baird?
Uh, no, sir, Mr. Chairman, the rest was information unless you all have any questions.
We have anything from the county attorney?
No, sir, unless you all have some questions.
Does anybody have any questions for, not Scott Farthing?
Not Scott Farthing. The B team.
You gotta get rid of that name tag because when I look up real...
I like to hide behind it.
All right, moving on to board reports, we have the Water Committee.
All right, you want the committee recommendations first, then the Water Committee met on October eighteenth, two thousand twenty-two and recommends changing the dessert, is that right?
Yes.
Stainless steel disc valves to the dessert disc iron valves on the Citco bid previously approved. This will result in a deduction of twenty-one thousand, six hundred and twelve dollars and ninety-seven cents.
All right, committee doesn't need a second, is there any questions or discussion about that recommendation? I'm assuming it was discussed, uh, that that would be a suitable durability, reliability, switching.
According to Mr. Chris, yes. And now the typo there is ductile iron is what it is instead of the stainless steel.
Does anybody else have any questions? All right, we'll do a roll call vote, Mr. Cook.
Aye.
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 So approved.
That was all the committee recommendations, the other one is to discuss the water meter size and staff recommendations. Do you want to do that, Stephen?
Uh, I, I will start with that and you all have that on, on page one nineteen and I, and I won't cover all of it. That's, uh, Mr. Blevins is here and this is a discussion that, uh, Ms. Williams, uh, brought up earlier. There are two manufactured home parks that were out there that, based on the number of homes that were previously on site, required a two inch meter, uh, as you are aware, we had the water rate change earlier this year. Uh, the base rate for the two inch meter, um, caused quite a bit of an increase for both of these manufactured home parks. Staff has reviewed both manufactured home parks with the number of homes that they are down at now. They could, uh, go to a, a one inch meter. The difference in monthly cost of three, uh, two inch meter has a base rate of a hundred and sixty-six thirty-two. A one inch meter has a base rate of fifty-one ninety-eight. Staff's recommendation is to retrofit a one inch meter into both of these properties. The cost of that would be seven hundred and fifty dollars. In addition, the staff's recommendation is to give them a credit, um, for the previous month that they have paid, to take it from the two inch meter rate to the one inch meter rate, which would be, uh, a difference of three hundred and forty-three dollars and, and two cents.
Is that from both properties?
That, that is from both properties, yes, sir, that, so it'd be a recommendation that they install the meter at the cost of seven hundred and fifty dollars, uh, and that, uh, then we would also, we would give it rebate of three hundred and forty-three dollars and two cents for the three months. If it's been four months, I guess it's still just three months now and we can get it changed, uh, before the next billing goes out to get them back to the one inch meter.
And is that seven hundred and fifty dollars able to be put on a plan to pay?
It could be put on a plan if so desired, yes.
And I'll...
But it's not seven fifty, it's four and third, four, three forty-three.
Yeah.
Three forty-three.
Be four, about four hundred and seven dollar difference, uh, when you take the three forty-three off. But they, they've already paid probably those two or three months in the process, so be deduct given back on that.
So, so make, I just want to make sure I understand, we would be giving them a credit back on their bill because they're paying a higher cost because it's two inch, technically they're not, at, at the end of the, the day, they're not getting a discount on that seven fifty, they're getting it on the bill?
Correct, they're, 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 well, the discount is on the, the previous three months that they have paid or will have paid.
Right.
Or, or billed on their bill. We will be taking that back instead of charging the two inch rate, we'll be charging it to one inch rate.
Okay, so, um, I'm sorry, I don't remember this gentleman's name, but he said, he made a comment that we required them to put the two inch pipe in originally?
Mr. Chris can jump in here if need to, but basically when, when you're, when you're setting the meters for a certain location, you have to do it based upon the number of homes, the number of fixtures that are there. So at the time, the number of homes that were in both of these parks required the setting of the two inch meter.
Okay, understand that, um, and I'm sure there was a cost to the citizen at that point for that two inch?
There was a cost to Ms. Williams at that point, but there was not a cost to Mr., whoever owned the property for, Mr. Blevins.
Simmerman.
Simmerman. Uh, he, the, he had a free connection for that because he paid the easement across his property for the water.
Okay.
So he basically paid it by giving us an easement.
Right.
Okay, gotcha. Thank you.
Can I get some clarification? I mean, I know I've already asked this, but why, why do we have to reset meters? Why can we not just charge them for a one inch meter and leave a two inch meter and say, as long as you don't o, use over a certain amount of water a month, then you'll be charged for the one inch meter?
That's all.
That's a good question.
And if you ever go over that amount, then you would start being charged for the two inch meter from then on. I mean, I know there's other, other people out there that's got two inch meters, but I mean, we can do stuff on a per case basis game. We, I mean...
I understand what you're saying, uh, possibly could. The challenge is the billing system is set up based upon the meter that's there and it, it, it picking up that as a two inch meter, so we would have to override the system and change it to say that there's a one inch meter installed there for it to bill it at the correct amount. I don't know if that would really create any...
It could, but, um, another issue that could present, um, the meters are s, the meters are sized, so a two inch meter's based for a minimum flow of X gallons and up to a maximum flow. So when you go downsizing a meter, upsizing a meter, you're trying to size that meter so the accountability is most accurate. So if we leave the two inch in, it's less accurate and they're using, you know, it just, it doesn't measure the waters accurately. So ideally you're going to want to match the meter with what you're trying to provide water to.
But it hadn't been a problem till we changed the rate structure.
I'd say, uh, on one meter it has and on one of the meters, it's a newer meter and it has a much wider flow range of a half a gallon a minute up to two hundred gallons a minute. The older meter like Ms. Williams, it has a range of around five gallons a minute to a hundred and sixty gallons a minute. So there are two different types of meters.
But that shouldn't be her issue because the meter's not, it's got that big of a range.
That's, yeah, I understand, but that's just how it was sized originally, so, um, but if we're going to accurately count for the water, it needs to be a one inch meter.
So how are we accounting for the water now?
Well, we use the two inch meter, so it, it really needs to be...
But we're still charging them the same rate, two inch meter for the same amount of gallons. If it was a one inch, it would be the same to Mr. Horny's point.
That's true, it doesn't measure the lower flows as accurately, I guess that's what I'm saying, so.
So I guess for me, uh, if, if Mr. Blevins bought the property after Mr. Simmerman, I think is what you said?
Yeah.
And he had already, he got it as an easement, got the meter put in, I don't think it's fair to charge Mr. Blevins when the meter's already there. Ms. Williams has already paid, I don't think we need to charge her again to put another meter in. She's already paid once, she shouldn't have to pay again. Again, that's just my opinion. And I'm just one of seven people saying...
No, I, I agree with you.
You know, my, my problem is that what has found us here is my problem. Is we voted to increase commercial water rates. To me, that was factories that use large amounts of water who weren't paying their fair share. You know, we had a gentleman earlier talking about, uh, you know, the, the vehicle tax and, you, you know, we, we can't go to twenty-nine thousand vehicles, but we can go to every factory with county and figure it out and say, hey, you know, overall, you're not paying your fair share, we're, you know. So that's what I thought I was voting. Now, hotels, that's a pass through tax, I'm going to channel the, the former supervisors of Fort Chisholm, that's the Yankee tax, they can pass that on to the, their customers. But I didn't vote to increase those rates to hurt people like Mr. Blevins and, and Ms. Williams. And, you know, they're, they're landlords and if they pass that cost on to their people, they're passing on to With County citizens. And I, I just have a problem with the whole thing, you know, I wanted, I wanted the, the Water Committee to address that part of it. Apparently they couldn't come to consensus, so this is where we're at, but I, you know, um, we get called a lot of things up here that unjustly, but, you know, this right here I don't agree with and if we're going to replace meters, I think we buck up pay for, but that's my opinion.
That's my, that's my opinion as well and that's, I like the point that Mr. Horny had and I was wondering the same thing because if Ms. Williams has a few residents and then she grows and she has, you know, five times as many, you can't just go back and forth, you know, one inch, two inch, one, you know. And, and if that happens, that would be on her, in my opinion, you know, if her property grows, her, her business grows. But for this, this case, I do not think that that seven fifty should fall on her. And that's just my opinion with it.
Well, my, my, the reason I asked was my thoughts were, I mean, that's a simple fix. I mean, you just change it in a computer or change it wherever and there's no seven hundred and fifty dollar fee, period. Eventually that two inch meter is going to go bad and when it goes bad, if they're still under that, say eight thousand gallon or ten thousand gallon a month, then you put in a one inch meter. And then if they come back later and say, well, the one inch meter's not big enough, I need a two inch meter, then they would have to pay the cost then, but, I mean, that's just my thoughts.
Based on the comments.
Or if we'd have changed, if we go back and change to, to just go after the commercial part of it and not landlords and residential stuff, we wouldn't have to change any meter, correct?
That's correct, that's the way I see it.
I hadn't thought about that, I hadn't thought about it that way, but, I mean, if we're, if, if we're going by the rate and we say the two inch rate doesn't apply to mobile home parks or, or housing units under twenty-five units,
then Mr. Blevins can have a five inch meter for all we care, he's going to pay the same rate.
Right.
Well, based on your comments, yeah, the staff recommendation was to, to pay for it, but what, what you could do is just recommend that the staff changes out the county's costs to the one inch meter and still give them the credit back on the other amount and we can proceed with that. County staff will insert the one inch meter, they'll be down at the fifty-six dollars for their rate and, um, we'll probably do the credit on the other.
Yeah.
Well, I mean, it goes back to what I, you know, I caught an unintended consequence last time Mr. Blevins was here and I still caught that, that's not what I voted for, I can't speak through other seats, but that's not what was in my mind.
Well, I mean, and I appreciate staff and the staff recommendation, and I know, I mean, we have fought this water ordeal for years, so I under, you know, I understand the whole picture and nothing's going to be perfect, but as far as this, I just, I can't support it, so I appreciate you all.
So do we need to...
I'd request, Mr. Chairman.
You want us to take action, this or the other?
I'll just request a motion from the, from a board member to, uh, uh, request staff to revise these to one inch meters and issue the refund, uh, the one inch meters at no cost to the owners and to issue the refund for the previous three months.
All right.
I'll, I'll make that motion.
Say.
I've got the votes to get it through, but I'll make that motion.
I have a motion by Mr. Horny, a second by Mr. Smith, is there any further questions or discussions? Hearing none, we'll do a roll call vote, Mr. Terry.
Aye.
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 So approved. Anything else from Water Committee?
I believe that was it.
All right, move on to Board Supervisors' time, Mr. Cook? I have nothing at this time. Mr. Burnett?
I have nothing at this time.
Ms. Fieri, Ms. Lawson?
You totally got me off guard with that.
I can't believe I pronounced it wrong.
You did good. I just had one item, um, Mr. Baird, you may have already done so, but just a quick follow up with B Dot regarding the panels hanging from the Kinsleyne Bridge blocking the creek.
Okay.
Um, I know Mr. Farthing had worked on that a little bit, so, and you may have already talked to B Dot, I just want to bring it up while it was on my mind and that's all. Thank you.
Mr. Smith?
Couple things, Mr. Chairman, uh, one thing, just to let everybody know, our, uh, the meeting that we had scheduled to, with B Dot at the Fort Chisholm area for the crosswalk has been postponed to the, the tenth of November, uh, so we will be meeting down there at eleven AM on the tenth to discuss the crosswalk for the, at the high school. So I'll keep that, keep everybody posted as that comes around. Mr. Baird, I know that we talked about the smart scale for Jones Road, I just want to keep that in front of us to make sure that we, um, I've talked to several residents down there and they're, they're good if we can pursue that. Uh, Gint Lane, I know that we had mentioned it, uh, Mr. Burnett and myself last meeting, did we ever find out anything about the meeting on that, Mr. Hankins?
We're working to set up, uh, time and a location, uh, it'll probably be sometime around the middle of November, uh, before we can, can get that scheduled. We, we've got a few things that we've got to delineate on the map showing how much of each property might have to be taken up by the right of way.
Okay, thanks, sir. Uh, then the last thing I got, Mr. Chairman, is, uh, I know we were just talking about some cameras for the, uh, command center. Uh, where do we stand on, uh, security for this campus here?
The, we need to get more cameras installed and I will check, I do not, I know we have not issued an RFP on that, but I'll see if it is ready to go out to get the additional RFPs on additional cameras.
Okay.
Internal and external, both.
All right, thanks, sir. If you could just keep us updated on that.
Yeah.
That's all I've got, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Horny?
I don't believe I have anything at this time. I don't believe I have anything at this time.
Mr. Terry?
Not at this time, sir.
Um. I hate Ms. Myers left. I was going to tell her thank you. Um, I know it's not, you know, seasons about over, but.
Farming's year end.
Well, for gentlemen, farming seasons about. Not everybody's got a fancy cab track. If you'll give with Elizabeth and, and have her get, or, or I'll reach out to Jeff Lucas.
I think she already, this probably just came from.
She, she has already reached out to State Farm and she's trying to work. I, I understand the person that Ms. Myers worked with to develop that is, is no longer with State Farm. So they're, they're trying to dig up, you know, some, some funding for that.
Okay. Um, and. That's all I've got, so we, next we got a closed session. I forgot my readers. Under two point two thirty-seven eleven A three acquisition or disposition of real property, Apex Property. And two point two thirty-seven eleven A five prospective. Um, new business or industry with county project. Now we entertain a motion, go in closed session.
So moved.
Have a motion by Mr. Terry. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Horny. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We'll have a five minute recess and be in closed session. Motion to come out of closed session by Mr. Cook. Do I have a second?
Second.
Have a second by Mr. Smith. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We're now back in open session on the record. Mr. Terry, if you'll read the certification.
Whereas the With County Board of Supervisors has convened a closed meeting on this state pursuant to an affirmative recorded vote and in accordance with the provisions. Of the Virginia Freedom of Information Act and whereas section two point two dash thirty-seven twelve of the Code of Virginia. Requires certification by the With County Board of Supervisors that such a meeting was conducted in conformity with the Virginia law. Now therefore be resolved that the With County Board of Supervisors hereby certifies it to the best of each member's knowledge. Only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements by Virginia law were discussed in the closed meeting. Which the certification resolution applies and only such public business matters as was identified in the motion convened in the closed meeting were heard, discussed and are considered by the With County Board of Supervisors. And Mr. Chairman, I'll make that a motion.
All right, we have a motion by Mr. Terry. Do I have a second?
Second.
Have a second by Mr. Horny. Do a roll call vote. Mr. Cook?
Uh.
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 So approved. Anything else to come before the board? Mr. Bear?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Hankins?
I will mention real quick, the first deposit has been made from the Virginia Lottery to the Regional Improvement Commission for the gaming tax proceeds from the Bristol Casino. Uh, that, that went in, um, yesterday, I believe, uh, to the account. That money won't be distributed until our next fiscal year, but I wanted to be aware that those monies have started coming in. It was just under one point six million dollars for the first two months. And we get one fourteenth of that.
What? County attorney, not Mr. Forwardy? You have anything more to? All right, here no more business. We'll adjourn.
Let, let, let me, let me just comment, Mr. Chairman, just for a reminder to everyone, our next meeting will be on Wednesday, November ninth. Tuesday due to the holiday.
Glad you said something.
Yeah, because I've been here too. All right, we'll be adjourned.
Don't you, won't you be out there getting people to vote?